And meeting for February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, roll call, please.
Pacino.
Uh, here.
Evans is absent. Madamore?
Here.
Is there White absent? O'Toole?
Here.
Schneider is absent and Moody?
Here.
That is four present to.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we can conduct business. Um, are there any changes to the agenda? Or do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay? Okay, agenda's going forward. Um. Next is approval of the um, of minutes on, on February tenth. Um. Is there a motion to uh, approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
From Donald. All those in favor of approving the February tenth minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? Okay, minutes are approved. Um, next item is um. Planning citizen comments on non-agenda related topics, no action will be taken. Seeing no one coming to the podium or on the screen, uh, we'll move on to the next item, which is planning commission and staff reports and comments. Derek, Philip, Joe, Emma?
Chair Commission, um, so over the last couple of years and quite frankly before that, um, we've really, as a city, put a lot of effort into getting more information out to the public. Um, it's a constant conversation with our department and the greater city. Um, but I think you might have noticed last year in council objectives, as well as this year, um, there has been an increased push from city council to um, improve our outreach to the community. And so in our office, um, recently, we've been talking and so we were talking about what we could do in regards to city council, or sorry, planning commission. Um, and so we kind of came up with the idea of doing a video, um, potentially every week, um, that summarizes each planning commission meeting. But we did want to kind of bring that before you guys to get your thoughts, opinions about it and see if this is something that you guys think is a valuable community asset or not. Um, and so, um, we're kind of springing this on you because I don't think that any of you guys have heard this or been warned about this at all. Um, but, but we did create a video um, on this and we did want to present it to you guys so that you guys can give your opinions on it or let us know if we're going in the right direction. Uh, this is not a critique on acting skills, I'll just say, because we know those are not good. But, um, yeah, so, um, we have one pulled up for our last meeting, um, to kind of give a general overview, um, and to let you guys have an opportunity to kind of discuss it. Um, obviously, if this is an item that you guys want to discuss further, this may be worth, um, going to an agenda item on a future meeting when, when all of your members are here, but we did want to bring this to you kind of in a prudent manner, so, um, Chair, if you don't mind.
Okay, let it, let it roll.
Yeah.
We had a full house last time. Yeah, we did, yeah.
Hello, Laramie. Welcome to the Planning Commission Recap, where we bring you updates on planning commission decisions. That's shape zero east grand avenue recap, where we bring you updates on planning commission decisions that shape our community. I'm Joseph, a planner of the city of Laramie, here to break down the key takeaways from the February tenth, twenty twenty five planning commission meeting. In this meeting, the commission reviewed six items, including four conditional use permits, one text amendment and one variance. A conditional use permit allows for specific uses that may have greater impact on surrounding properties and require a detailed review to mitigate potential issues. A text amendment involves changing city code to adapt to new conditions or policies, while a variance provides relief from certain code requirements when unique property conditions create a hardship. Let's get started with the items discussed at this meeting. First on the agenda was a conditional use permit for range coffee roasting at three one three South Second Street. The applicant requested approval to operate a wholesale coffee roasting business within the downtown commercial zoning district. The commission considered potential impacts such as odor, traffic, compatibility with existing businesses. After discussion, the planning commission approved the permit with conditions to ensure compliance with city standards. The applicant noted that the roasting process included an afterburner to mitigate odors and roasting operations would be limited to maintain minimal impact on the community. Next, the commission reviewed a conditional use permit for an addition to the Laramie Interfaith Building at seven one two Kennedy Street. Interfaith provides essential community services, including food distribution and support programs. The expansion include cover, storage, a new loading area and improved public access. The commission approved the request with conditions recognizing the importance of the service to the community. The applicant explained that interior renovations would create a new waiting area, reducing congestion at the entrance, but otherwise would not change the impact on the surrounding area. Another significant topic was a request from Starbucks to establish a coffee shop with a drive-through at two two three South Adams Street. The property includes both a limited business V one and limited multifamily R two M district zoning, which triggered the need for a conditional use permit. Key concerns raised include traffic flow, pedestrian safety and access points. The planning commission approved the permit contingent on adherence to site plan, which will have to comply with applicable city codes, including but not limited to parking, landscaping and traffic control. The applicant clarified that the design follows a standard Starbucks prototype and adequate parking in circulation. The commission also reviewed a request for a sign shop to operate within the downtown commercial district at six oh six South Second. The applicant WC, WC Engineering represented American Paintbrush, which specializes in custom signage. Given prior text amendments conditionally allowing sign shops sit in the district, the commission approved the permit with conditions. The applicant affirmed that operations would not include painting, but would primarily involve vital signage production, a generally less intensive use. The commission discussed two separate related items concerning digital billboards. First, Lamar Advertising submitted a text amendment to amend chapters fifteen twenty-two to allow digital billboards within the city limits. The proposed amendments aim to allow non-conforming static boards to be replaced with digital billboards. Planning staff recommended denial, setting conflicts with city planning documents and policies to reduce billboard presence and maintain visual aesthetics. After discussion, the commission voted to recommend denial of the text amendment to the city council, stating that allowing digital billboards contradicts long-term planning objectives and community goals. Next, the commission seated as the board of adjustments, considered a variance request from Lamar Advertising to replace an existing static digital board at two one three zero east grand avenue with a digital billboard. The variance process is meant to provide limited relief in cases of unique hardship and approval is contingent on all six required findings being met. The commission debated if Lamar provided enough evidence to meet all six of the findings and ultimately denied the variance. Discussion included concerns about community aesthetics, surrounding zoning districts, lighting and the precedent it would set for future requests. That's a wrap for this planning commission update. If you have any questions about these projects or want to get involved with the planning process, visit our website at cityoflermy.org slash planning. Thanks for tuning in and we'll see you at the next planning commission meeting on February twenty fourth.
Are we broadcast on channel ninety-five or? How much it council is?
No, neither city council nor us are broadcast on that channel.
Sharon or Donald, questions for Joe? Joe, how long do you think it'll, I know this one probably took a lot of time, uh, but how much time, how much of your time will be involved in doing this? Do you have to do the editing?
So, um, we didn't, we did some of the editing, but um, we have some management analysts to do that in our, um, and so it was kind of a team effort. Um, we kind of set it up. We did the script. We, um, film, filmed some of it and set together the slideshow. Um, I'll just say, you're right, this first one took a lot of time and if the next one take this much, it take, took as much time as this one, it would be very problematic. Um, but I think once we have kind of a template down and kind of an idea of how we want this to go and how to get to a final product, it should really minimize to like, you know, a couple hours, really hopefully two or three at the most.
There's a big difference between should and will. I mean, realistically, it'll take a morning.
Right, right, because we have to, we have to go back through planning commission and then create a, a script and those are some of the longer aspects of it, but yeah.
TikTok awaits.
Would this be disseminated to the public, toward the public access?
I think in our minds, we were thinking like just putting it onto Facebook, um, or we have our YouTube page as well, but Facebook kind of gets it directly to people. It seems like there's kind of a, a alright-ish following of our Facebook page, um, you know, but, but really.
Commission has a Facebook page?
Not planning commission, just the city of Laramie.
There he does, yeah.
Um, but, but yeah, um. In our minds, this was kind of the direction that would go is just kind of social media ask route and then probably on our YouTube page as well.
The only suggestion I have would be to put a link to the agendas page where you can watch the whole meeting.
Perfect, yeah.
Uh, Donald? Yeah, the sound is terrible. Yeah.
Yeah, so our, turns out that our office was a little bit noisy the day that we were, we were recording and then, uh, so our management analysts needed to do some editing. Um, so I think we're going to be working on that and hopefully we'll, again, this was kind of the first draft of it. Um, we didn't want to put more than the time we had already spent on it if you guys were thinking that this was not a valuable use of our times.
I guess I'm wondering what, what prop, specific problem is, is this addressing? Is just, just a general idea of let's, let's throw something out to the public that's a little more digestible? Or, or have you gotten feedback from people saying, God, I just, I just don't want to read the packet and then wade through the verbiage or the, um, the written stuff?
Right, well, our, our, our thought process and this partially came from our outreach at, at Farmer's Market is that. No offense and we're, I'm also here, but nobody wants to watch our entire meetings, unfortunately.
Offense taken.
Yeah. Um, unfortunately, you know, the best way to get our meetings is probably to watch them from start to finish, but very, very, very few people actually do that. Um, and so if we still offered an option, a short summary that, you know, people could look at and see what the major items were without watching the entire thing, um, it could pique interest and let people know, hey, these are the projects that we're working on. These were the meetings that they were at. Continually trying to expose people to more of the decision-making process that, um, a lot of people may know about but not follow, or maybe just don't know about it at all.
Okay, to be food for thought. I don't want to go on too, too long on this, but.
Right.
Um, Donald, we got a pithy question?
It's a great pithy, I have to ask it. Uh, uh, it doesn't need music. I mean, um, and uh, okay, it doesn't need music. Why did you put music in?
Uh, that was just a added feature that our management analysts.
Nathan ZZ Top. Okay, wait, it doesn't, I mean, the, the sound quality is awful. I could hear maybe half of it and it doesn't need a background musical track that is not loud enough you can enjoy it, but so loud it's interfering with what you're saying. Other than that, it was perfect.
Okay.
And maybe next time when we, when you know, I'm talking about it, some, some way to, to, to see whether people are actually watching it, what the public input is, you know, whether it's, we're just doing this for ourselves. Um, so.
Well, and our thought is this, like, if this is a direction, we wanted to bring this before you so that you guys can say, hey, we'd like to see more of this or no, um, but then also kind of have a potentially like trial period where, you know, like at a, at a very definitive time, we re-review this and we say, yeah, this was worth it or, or please, please stop doing this.
Okay, all right, very good. Um.
I just wanted to add, uh, just real quickly, I, I love the idea and so I love the idea of doing it. Let's give it a try because I fundamentally, it's, it's a way to engage people that aren't, aren't engaged in just knowing what the planning commission, um, is doing, engaging them civically, and I think that's more important than ever right now. So I, I love it and I thought it was exactly the right length and the visuals were good.
All right. Anything else, uh, comments from? Derek?
Uh, Chair Commission, um, I just wanted to hand out, I'm just going to hand out a little, uh, document that we received from, uh, Albany County, um, and it's from the emergency management coordinator, uh, Kate Alred. Um, and the city of Laramie, as well as Albany County, and it's primarily done through the county, puts together a hazard mitigation plan. And so they have a plan that's been put together. The county does work with city staff members asking all sorts of questions and researching documents and things to put these plans together. It's a pretty lengthy document, um, but I'm just going to hand this out to you. The public comment period is open right now. And so for anyone that is curious about what's in that plan, um, you can come take a look at this. There's a QR code, there's a website location, so you can go read the whole plan and take a look at it. And, um, I just want to make you aware of that. And so I'll just bring three copies up there. I've got a few extra copies I'll put back on the table. Um, you can also search this really easily, um, uh, on the county's website. I think that they've got the, a link up as well to provide public comment. So if anyone in the public is interested in this, they can look at it as well, so.
Would, would this be like, you know, you know, what happens in case of a flood or a fire? Derek, is this?
Yes, um, literally any type of hazard. Um, they earthquakes, I mean, they, they literally try to, to plan for a lot of different things. And so that's, that's really what this plan outlines and who certain contacts are. There's, there, like I said, it's a fairly lengthy plan, but there's a lot of information in there. And so, you know, if you're interested in this and I know.
I think it's critical. Absolutely.
Mentioned this a couple of times and it's why I'm bringing it to you.
Appreciate it.
You know, I think it's worth your time to maybe take a look at it, so, okay?
Right on. Very good. Um, anybody else there, uh, commissioners, anything bring up? Staff? Okay. Um, next item is disclosures, exportate communications, potential conflicts of interest. Anything to confess?
All right, I am very well acquainted with, uh, one of the people who wrote a letter to the, uh, planning staff about the next item on the agenda, Mr. Tom Rans, but again, this is a small town. It's hard not to know at least one person involved, so.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, you're off the hook. You're, you're still with us, Tom? Okay. Um, on to current planning projects, uh, old business, there is none. Uh, onto new business, the first item is A dash twenty-four dash zero 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 one annexation, uh, Hilltop parcel. Emma?
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Planning Commission. Um, the item before you this evening is the annexation request for the Hilltop parcel, commonly known as W Hill and accessed by Hilltop Drive. The request includes both annexation and rezoning, as land should not be annexed into the city without a zoning designation, and the zoning application will be heard as the next agenda item. This parcel owned by Wilco Land LLC of South Dakota and represented by Tom Willis is currently an unincorporated county island surrounded by the city of Laramie, which would like annexation. Tom Willis is joining us via Zoom this evening. Thank you, Mr. Willis. Wyoming State Statute fifteen dash one dash four oh six D prohibits the creation of such county islands, and the annexation would ensure compliance with state law in support of effective city planning. The city of Laramie prepared the annexation report on behalf of the applicant to meet these requirements. So under Wyoming State Statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two, the annexation must meet the following statutory findings. One, the annexation must protect the health, safety and welfare of residents. This is achieved by bringing the parcel under the city's jurisdiction, ensuring access to city emergency services, including fire and police, and maintaining city level standards for infrastructure and safety. Two, the area must constitute a natural geographical, economical and social part of the city. The Hilltop parcel is surrounded by developed city parcels, properties, and annexing it will create a more cohesive urban environment. Four, the property must be contiguous or adjacent to the city limits. This parcel meets that requirement and would again eliminate an existing county island, which is prohibited by state law. Um, five, if needed, the city must be prepared to issue utility franchises. No concerns were raised by the franchise utilities during the review process. And for legal notification, all required notification to landowners and public utilities were completed twenty days prior to the city council public hearing, complying with statutory requirements. Additional notice was also sent under the requirements of Laramie Municipal Code. So getting into some information about the parcel, if annexed, any future development will have reasonable access to city water, sewer, garbage, recycling, mosquito control and emergency services. Due to the property's elevation, water and sewer service provision might be challenging and the engineering department will collaborate with the developer if proposals for development are submitted. At this time, no proposals for development have been received by the city of Laramie. Financially, the parcel would shift from tax district one oh one to one fifty, increasing annual property tax from six oh three to six forty-seven based on twenty twenty-four assessed values. Development costs are detailed in the annexation report, which is attached to the agenda, with an, with initial infrastructure fees for a single parcel development estimated at approximately six thousand five hundred for a three-quarter inch water meter and the sewer and water plant investment fees. Please keep in mind that since no development has been proposed at this time, that these numbers would need to be developed, uh, revisited if that were to occur. Additionally, should development occur, the city could generate modest revenue through utility fees and property taxes. Now, while action by city review and decision-making bodies shall be in accordance with applicable Wyoming State Statute, I do want to take some time and address some public concerns that are important for community transparency and input throughout the process. Many of the public concerns raised to me so far relate to the possibility of development, which is not being proposed at this time, but I'm still happy to provide some overall background from the Laramie Municipal Code. So the previous owner of this property was not interested in bringing it within city limits and did not propose development. It is since sold and the new owners now desire annexation. I spoke with David Gerch of the Albany County Planning to get additional background and if the owner of the parcel was interested, they could have submitted a rezoning application and developed the parcel according to Albany County zoning district standards, once an access agreement was worked out with the city. Due to the lesser population density commonly found in the county, county development standards are much less rigorous than the city of Laramie's and there are no building permits required. So this annexation would also ensure that if any future development were to occur, it would be held to City of Laramie Code instead of county code. Albany County is also in support of this annexation as the parcel is currently surrounded by city limits. Uh, another common one was drainage. Given the steepness of the area, some neighboring properties have already experienced stormwater runoff issues. If any development occurs, city regulations will require stormwater management systems, and this can look like a number of different improvements and will be determined based on proposed development if submitted. Uh, another one was traffic and emergency access. So the fire department's code limits development to twenty-nine dwelling units without a secondary access road, which is unlikely given the challenging topography. A traffic impact analysis would also be required if proposed development exceeds a specific trip volume threshold, helping to ensure that neighborhood traffic safety is maintained. So importantly, to keep in mind, no development has been proposed at this time. However, if the property is annexed and zoned R one, the owner could legally build one single-family home with garage. Any development beyond that would undergo several processes, including the preliminary and final plat review. Each of these processes and reviews would involve posted, mailed and legal public notice similar to the annexation, with opportunities for community input and strict compliance with city codes, environmental considerations and standards. So in conclusion, Planning Commission, this is an extremely unique circumstance, as this is the only county island remaining within city limits, and it affords the opportunity to meet Wyoming State Statute, to bring the parcel within city limits and have more regulatory oversight over any development that may be proposed. Planning staff recommends approval of this annexation based on the applicable city code and Wyoming State Statute as discussed. Thank you so much for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Emma. Um, Tom?
I, I have a couple of questions on this. Uh, when we did the urban growth plan, this item was discussed and for a long time, the city didn't feel it was worth the effort to, since the, the previous owner of the property didn't really want to be in the city. So they didn't think it was worth the effort, but this is, uh, something that we're pretty much stuck with by state statute. It is an island inside the municipality and like it or not, we should take it over and do something. My concern is with the new ownership there. Will the city require, regardless of development, whether he applies for a building permit or a plat or whatever he wants to do with it? Is the city going to require him to deal with the existing drainage issues, the existing erosion issues that are causing problems for residents entirely on the south side, on the west side of the property and on the southeast corner, where some attempts at mitigation have been attempted, but it's a pretty steep hill and pretty, pretty small step? Will the city require the new owner to start mitigating those problems?
I will likely defer to William, the engineer, from the city present at this meeting. Um, however, if no development is proposed, to my knowledge, um, the owner wouldn't then be required to improve the land, um, if no development is proposed. However, I'm not sure if the city has any steps that it would take.
So this is in, in the case there's, there's no.
Case no develop.
He buys the property, he's got the problem, it's his, it's.
It is, and it needs to be addressed.
He's not, he's not proposing any development and whether he's, he's liable.
Yeah.
Obligated to actually correct problems.
Correct existing conditions.
Go ahead.
Honorable Chair, through you, uh, at this time, if there is no development that happened, this is not something that the city would be involved with until development comes. There's existing conditions that are out there. So we would have to look at what, how were the properties platted around this island? How were those, what kind of conditions were established at those times? That's what the city would look at and would make sure are, are being kind of abided by. But with the, with the property itself, that would be more of a neighborly kind of condition where they need to, we would encourage the neighbors to work together to find the solution on that one.
Bro.
You know, if he doesn't develop it, it could sit there for ten years and we're still going to get erosion and flooding and, and houses. So, uh, I, isn't it a city ordinance that you got to keep your own water on your own property? Or at least slow it down enough so that it doesn't cause damage to your neighbors?
So, Honorable Chair, through you, there is, the ordinance is not through to, that you have to hold your water on your own property. There is historic flows, that's what we try and match through, that being an undeveloped property, that property's developed around, around the hill, essentially. So the conditions weren't changed by the property owner with this. If the property owner went in there and changed conditions, increased impervious area, increased all these things, then the property owner is definitely responsible for that. Now, I don't know all the, the ins and outs of how we solve the problem between two neighbors. I know that we have these problems in other places in the city. I do know I looked briefly, I have not had a lot of time to research this because there isn't a proposed development at this time, but I have looked at, there's, there are drainage swales that were, uh, planned with previously platted properties on the west side that would be in an easement that are the property owners that own that easement to be, to address. So there are, there are, there were things taken into consideration when those properties were platted. So there are, there were things taken into consideration when those properties were platted. I've been at the city for ten years, I have not heard a lot of conversation about drainage concerns in the area, so I don't have a lot of background yet on that. But it would definitely be something that the Engineering Office and Public Works in general would investigate and look at, and then have to kind of decide the best paths forward from there.
Just one more question, if I may, Chair. Other than the drainage structure at the end of Nighthawk where it hits Twenty-Second Street, are there any other storm sewers, facilities on the south or east, on the south or the west side of the property in question?
So, Honorable Chair, through you. Other than the little bit that I've looked at, because I have not done it, like I said, not done a thorough investigation of what is supposed to be out there. I have not seen all the construction plans from the original plat. The only thing that I've found so far is, yes, there were drainage easements established on the west side of the hill. There's also, there was an easement on the south side of the hill. That, I say easement, that was a platted alleyway on the south side of the hill. That kind of wraps up over closer to Nighthawk. But there are no drainage facilities as if
Storm sewer inlets.
Pipes, there's no inlets, there's nothing of that nature in that area. And honestly, there's not a whole lot of stormwater infrastructure like that north of Reynolds Street.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for William? Donald?
William, just to be clear, if, let's say you hear testimony from the folks that are here and say, "This property has been a nuisance in terms of drainage." Is that their problem, or is that your problem, or is it both?
Honorable Chair, through you. The answer is, right now, I don't have enough background to know. I would need to investigate, like I said, how those other properties were platted. The fact that this property has never been platted with the city means that we've never had any kind of controls on what the property does with the drainage and the different things to it. So to me, at that point, it's still between neighbors, and then that's not an easy solution.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Wim? Okay, is the applicant here? Is this Tom DW? Okay, Tom, you're up, you want to say a few things?
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody, Chairman and the Planning Commission, and everybody at the meeting. Yeah, I mean, we purchased this property sometime last year. And, you know, we're not necessarily developers really or anything, and so we have been working with the city on some of these annexing plans. We would, I mean, we are talking with a couple of engineering firms, Coffee Engineering in Laramie to kind of try and come up with a plan for plating the property. So far, we don't really have anything nailed down. We're really at, you know, square one with that process. And, and so, you know, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. Do you have any questions for me specifically, or?
Anything? I mean, other than, we know all these folks give their public comment, keep your ears wide open.
Yeah, yeah, we've been working pretty closely with Philip and the Planning Department, and, you know, we love to hear from the neighbors. I think we've reached out to a couple of neighbors over the months that we've owned it. And, you know, just trying to figure out, you know, a good solution for us as a business and then also for the city. Obviously, it's a pretty prominent spot in town. And, you know, we're from South Dakota, so, you know, kind of have some background in towns like this, I guess. And we just want to, if we're going to do a project and plot it out, we want it to be a win-win for everybody, I guess.
Okay. No other questions from Commissioners, and we'll go to public comment. And before we go into that, if folks that want to talk about annexation, about the process of this piece of property being landlocked within the city and being county, and the issues that Emma brought to our attention, I would appreciate that you focus on that. The next item will be the zoning. If it passes, will be how it's zoned, and that might be the better place to talk about your concerns that we've seen so far in the comments. But you're still free to come up, and every public comment will have a limit of three minutes and come up and state your name, and Ryan, do you want their address?
They will provide it, just sign in if they're your address there.
Okay, so if there's any public comment on the annexation.
Honorable Chair, if I may, just jump in. You've mentioned if this passes, we will present both items to you. I mean, you guys can make your recommendation, of course, but both items, I don't think it's, if you guys end up recommending denial of the annexation.
We still have to
We'd still hear the rezoning because that's just a recommendation to city council.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, if anybody wants to talk about annexation, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Gorman, twenty sixty-three North Seventeenth, directly west of the hill. And I just want to say that I have no issues at all with the annexation, and I think it would be a good thing for this property to become inside the city limits so that if it is developed down the road, there'll be a little more protections than if it was done in the county. And having been the county engineer, I think I can
Tense to that.
So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming up and giving us the county take based on experience. Right.
No longer the county.
Right, right, I understand. Any other public comment on this issue? Seeing, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Mike Lance. My wife and I live at twenty-one twelfth Nighthawk, which is directly south of this property, right on the corner. I've just got a couple of comments. One, I think it makes sense to bring this into the town. It's, when we moved here ten and a half years ago, I was amazed to find that there was this little island. In the annexation report, it talks about subject to all easements and rights of way record. And just didn't know if there are any.
Chair, through you. So, the legal description of the map within the annexation report, that is the specific boundary that was legally completed by a surveyor. So that is the legal description of that land. There are no easements within that parcel. However, around it, as William was mentioning, there may be some. We haven't done a full development kind of report into that background.
Okay, so on that property, there are no easements or rights of way?
Apparently not.
Okay. One other question that I have is, wondering how much of that property is actually developable, given the topography of that land? It's pretty, particularly the east side of that is
This may be a question that on the zoning end might be something that we'll definitely talk to. But anyways, I mean, if you want to answer that, Emmy, take a shot at it.
Definitely. Since no development has been proposed at this time, just, we haven't received anything for review, and through that review would go through the slope engineering. I'm not sure, William, if you have anything else you'd want to add to this. But since it is currently private property, it is up to the owner to then propose what they would like to develop, and then it is our job to see how that falls within code for safety and health.
And then the last question I have is, as part of this annexation process, is it, can the city encourage and/or make the owner developer provide for some of that stormwater retention? Our property is one that gets, on a good rain, it comes right through our property.
Yeah, Emma, go ahead.
As William stated earlier, unfortunately, that still is, a change of ownership does not trigger anything, so it would be up to the neighbors and the owner of the property until such time development is proposed.
So you don't, the town doesn't have any, or the city doesn't have any leverage to do that through this process?
Not through annexation.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there any other questions out there in the audience? Okay, seeing none. Final discussion by Commissioners on this?
Well, I can, Tom, we'd like to assure, if I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to reassure the public that when someone comes in with a plat for a development in front of the planning staff and before this commission, believe me, we seriously take stormwater and stormwater drainage and into consideration, and it's a big topic with us. All three of us here tonight were on the stormwater focus group and delved into it deeply for the city. And staff really goes through this rigorously, so they're not going to be haphazard about it. So if any development up there is, I'm sure it'll be up to city standards. My concern is more about traffic than anything else, construction traffic. But construction traffic doesn't last forever, so.
Right, Sharon?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to recommend approval to the city council the annexation of an approximate fifteen point eight acres of land generally located off Hilltop Drive and between Fifteenth Street, Beaufort Street, and Twenty-Second Street, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Second. From Tom, final discussion amongst Commissioners, seeing none, roll call vote.
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans is absent. Madamore?
Aye.
Isaac White, absent. O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider, absent. And Moody?
Aye.
That is four yeses, zero no, and three absences.
Okay, annexation recommendation to the city council is approved. This has to go through council. So the next item of business is RZNE twenty-four dash zero 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 one, rezoning for Hilltop Annexation.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Planning Commission. Following our discussion of the Hilltop Annexation, as Chair Moody put, the next item is the associated rezoning. This request proposes amending the City of Laramie's official zoning map to rezone approximately fifteen point eight acres, which is the entirety of the Hilltop Parcel, from county not zoned to city R1, single-family residential. As discussed, the annexation rezoning requests are closely linked. Should the annexation be approved, it is necessary to assign it an appropriate city zoning designation to the parcel. The proposed R1 zoning aligns with the surrounding neighborhoods, all of which are zoned R1 and consist of single-family residential homes. The proposed zoning is not only consistent with the Laramie Comprehensive Plan, which designates this area as suburban residential, but it also supports broader community goals outlined in Housing Study and Action Plan and Community and Economic Development Action. Both plans highlight the critical need for expanding housing quality and quantity, and designating this parcel for a single-family residential aligns with these priorities for any future potential infill. We also checked with the Parks and Recreation Department in the master plan, and there is no future park or parklet identified within this parcel, likely due to topography and access. Rezoning the property to R1 would provide important benefits to our community. So should the property remain under county jurisdiction, as we've gone over, the county could develop it under county standards. By rezoning the parcel to city R1, we ensure that any future development meets the R1 zoning district requirements, which is one that has normally larger lot sizes as well for the residential zoning districts, and also again meets those high city standards for safety, infrastructure, and neighborhood compatibility. It is also important to note, again, kind of going back to the public comment piece about concerns of drainage, infrastructure, and neighborhood impact, a lot of which was covered in the annexational review as well, is that the R1 designation would help address these concerns by holding future development to stricter city codes and providing more public oversight. If this parcel was annexed into the R1 zoning district, the owner could legally build one single-family home with a garage that would be held to building code, city code, and then the international building and residential codes. However, for any development beyond that one home, as Chair Moody stated, and it would then go through the plating process, which consists of the preliminary and then the final plat process, both of which include opportunities for public comment and also extensive work and review with city departments to ensure that any development meets all codes and safety requirements. So in conclusion, staff recommends approving the zoning request as it meets the requirements of this application and aligns with our city's vision for thoughtful and sustainable growth. With that, I'm happy to turn it over to Planning Commission for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Emma. Commissioners, any questions on the rezoning? Tom?
Just a general order of how things go. If we give him an R1, and he decides to do anything else but R1 building and submits a plat, wants to go for R3, would we deal with it as variance in zoning? Is that the way we would deal with it?
Chair, through you. Feel free to jump in if I've misinterpreted your question, but it sounds like you're saying if it is zoned R1, and then through the plating process, like, let's say, a business is proposed, that would not be able to go through the variance process because that would not be an allowed use within that area. It would have to be rezoned.
Okay.
It would be conditional use.
Conditional use, which is what we'd have to get.
Right.
Alright, so my concern is somebody puts a hotel up there.
Chair, through you, they would have to go through the same rezoning application process to do that because a hotel would not be, it's not even a conditional use allowed. It would be a prohibited use.
Good to know.
Okay. Any other comments from Commissioners for Emma? Okay, the applicant? Anything further to say?
No, nothing. I mean, I appreciate everybody's input today, and I think some of the runoff items that were brought up are good to know more about. And, you know, we intend to, you know, follow, you know, the process set up by the city and abide by all of the rules and regulations that go along with that. So, I mean, I appreciate everybody's time, and that's all I've got.
Alright, thank you, Tom. Any final questions from Commissioners on Donald?
So, Tom, if I could ask you, do you have an approximate timeline? I understand that you're not developers, but do you have an approximate timeline for when you expect things to happen on this patch of land?
So, we've got a couple kind of trains of thought. I think some of the engineering proposals that we've received, their timeline was first quarter of twenty twenty-six to complete the plating. And then after it's been platted, I think, you know, putting the infrastructure in place would take place at that point. I'm not sure exactly how long that would take or anything like that, but as far as the engineering company's proposal, they said first quarter twenty-six to finish the plat.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it seems to me like, you know, Yeah, I mean, it seems to me like, you know, R, R one is a pretty, makes, makes sense. Given co- continuity with the, with the zoning surrounding it. Anyways, uh, I'll, we'll open it up for public comment. So whoever wants to come up and, and, and talk, this is your opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's David Lewis, my wife and I reside at nineteen thirty one Hilltop. I am in favor of the annexation and R one zoning at this time to help protect. Property owners on the downhill slope. Uh, I have to thank Emma for taking a phone call. Searching an answer on the zoning R one storm drainage for stormwater runoff, she got right back to me within twenty four hours. I also want to, uh, thank the property owner, neighboring his good citizenship. I'd be happy to work with you in any concerns you have or that I have with runoff. Downhill Top Drive and around the corner by our house. Again, just reiterate, I support R one zoning for that property, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anybody else, come on up?
My name is Larry Wilkie, eighteen fourteen Beaufort Street. Now I just wondered how would it work, our property butts up on the north side of that. If we just wanted to buy a section of that land. To keep somebody from building a house right next to our house on the side of the fence, how would that work? Does that, we wouldn't be responsible for developing it or anything if we wanted just to expand our. Uh, size of our property by buying some of that land, would that create problems?
Well, it's all, it's owned by this gentleman. Yeah, it does, it's.
Well, somebody called me wanting to know if we wanted to buy some of it several months ago, I don't know if it was you or not, Tom. Might have been.
I think that, that was probably someone in my office by the name of Kobe.
Okay, so at that point, actually, we moved into our house in ninety three. And we at that time, several of the people there decided, you know, it'd be nice if we just bought part of that hillside. And so I contacted Mr. Coughlin out in California. And he said he wasn't interested in selling at that point. And so, and I've told you guys that I wasn't interested either, but the more I think about it, it might not be a bad idea. That would do that because see, we're on the, the north end. And we've built a berm to keep the water from coming down on our property. And so it would be maybe beneficial for us to look at that, so. I don't know, Tom, if you, I think. You have my name somewhere, I think, because you guys called, somebody did, and.
Is it Bill, what, what was your?
Larry Wilkie.
Larry Wilkie, okay, yeah, I'll, um, I'll talk to Kobe about that tomorrow. Um, and we can kind of stay in touch about, you know, what, what options are, um, what we can work out there.
Do you need my phone number?
Um, sure.
Three oh seven, seven four five, eight four seven eight.
Eight four seven eight, okay.
Uh, yeah, I know, okay, I'm glad we could bring you guys together here. But, you know, we're A to Z commissions.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wilkie, anybody else out there for, that want to comment? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Karen Estes. Uh, I and my husband live at nineteen sixty three North Seventeenth Street in Laramie, so we are on the direct, uh, west side. Or on the hillside underneath the hill. And I just am wanting to use this opportunity to share, uh, my concerns, some of which have already been mentioned here and may come up. I understand, um, more appropriately, maybe in things that go forward after developments are proposed. But kind of in the spirit of, um, maybe starting the neighborhood discussions also. Um, stormwater drainage was a major concern for us and we had a flooded basement in twenty twenty two. For the first time after living there since nineteen ninety two, so there's a changing situation up there and it is of a concern. Um, when we went out afterwards, uh, we found a, um, what had been a drainage ditch that had been very effective in earlier years. That is now completely clogged with soil and trees and other things in it, not on our property. I think past what I thought was the easement. And so we're looking for opportunities to rectify that some way, somehow, whatever the means. But I think, again, that sounds like that'll be part of maybe later discussions. Um, uh, basically, I should say, I guess, at the outset, I am also, I guess, in favor of. Both the annexation that already has been recommended and the, and probably the R one zoning. I'm not really sure what the implications of R one are for some of these other things, people have mentioned the easement, and so now I'm talking about the easement. Well, what I think is an easement between our property and the, and, and the parcel in question. Um, and one of the things I've been wondering about, and I think some of my neighbors have, it has to do with whether there would be. There has been sort of an informal alley back there, so people drive in through the back and you can access your backyards, but it's basically just a dirt track. Never been improved, questions I had included whether that would be improved in some way with one or the other of these changes. Or, um, and including, it raised, um, at least in my mind, a question of. What would go on with fencing, so I know there's some alleys that end up with sort of fencing around them, and I'll just mention that our house, and I think. Ones on either side of us are part of a thing that we were told was covenanted, if that is a word, against fencing. So we do not have fences in any of the backyards and therefore we look out the back and there's this unimpeded view, beautiful, all the way up to the top of the hill. Don't know what changes might be made, but if a consideration of that covenanting could be taken into account, we'd. We'd really appreciate that, I don't actually know where the easement is and any clarification of that, about that would also be really useful. Um, we've heard discussions in previous, um, discussions of development up on the hill about water pressure. So a concern of ours is, I, I understand that's going to be, that would probably be an engineering. Um, matter going forward with a development, but, um, that's of interest as well. And then finally, I'm going to mention on my wish, on my wish list, that property is so fantastic. As I'm sure Tom knows, and I mean, it's obviously owned by someone specifically, but. Since, uh, nineteen ninety two, when we've been living there, and I'm sure before that, um, there have been lots of people who enjoy walking. Dog walking, kite flying up there, I know, private property, so not my thing, but a unique spot. In Laramie with a three hundred and sixty degree prospect, uh, Laramie, the north, the west, the east, it's fantastic. If there were any way for there to be some kind of development of, or I would say. Retaining some kind of public access to the very top of that, it would be really fantastic for the community. Because it's just absolutely amazing, maybe a, a footpath. I, I just throw it out there, I, I'm realizing that this all is contingent on owners wanting to do something, so. I, I thank you for the opportunity to make comments.
Thanks, and thank you for your comments by email, they were, it's very good. Anybody else out there? Mr. Gorman?
Bill Gorman, twenty sixty three North Seventeenth again, so. I do want to reiterate basically the, what has been said before. Uh, we have been flooded also by, uh, runoff coming off the hill. And I would also confirm that there is, there was an interception ditch that was. Constructed at some time, probably when our subdivision was developed. But it, it has been pretty much filled in or, or, um, damaged. And definitely needs to be maintained, and so that, uh, area that we used to get in. To the back of the lots, uh, would be nice for there to be a, probably a bigger and a more of a. Distinct easement for that going forward, so that. Landowners like us can get to our, our backyards with equipment or, or materials if needed. Being on the side of the hill, it makes it pretty tough to bring everything from the street. So it's, it's pretty critical that we have, uh, access easement through there. Uh, that, the other thing that I'd like to say is that I don't really know why it wasn't considered to be. Rural residential as one of the zoning categories for this, that seems a little more appropriate. Based on the square footages for the lots, the minimum square footages, the way I understand it, looking at the, um. Development code, the minimum size for rural residential is eight thousand square foot and for R one, it's four thousand. So with fifteen acres, you got a potential for a lot of houses with four thousand square foot lots. Now, I don't know if that's what the developer or what the landowner would do. But anyway, my, my pitch would be for, uh, going with rural residential rather than R one. I think that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Anybody else out there?
Hello, Commissioner, uh, my name is Jacob Thayer of seven twenty one South Eighth Street, um, but I am assisting. Mr. Bill Byrd of, uh, seventeen thirteen Downey to read his statement to the commission. He, uh, wishes the commission to know as follows, several years ago, some of the lowest floors or basements on both the north and south sides of W Hill. Were flooded during a rainstorm, the flood at my house at seventeen thirteen Downey Street caused. Caused the street to be covered with fast moving water and the curb sluice on one side of the street to. To flood over to the other side, the intersection of Fifteenth and Reynolds was covered with clay. These sluces were inadequate to the, to accommodate the oncoming flow of water off W Hill. He asks, would streets on W Hill cause more? Uh, a more rapid flow of water off the hill, would all of this water flow into the intersections of Night Hawk and Hilltop? At the intersection of Eighteenth and Reynolds, Thirtieth and Reynolds and Twenty Second and Night Hawk across Reynolds. Uh, from the middle school are retaining ponds, if, um, water diverts off the hill. To the north side of the retaining, will additional retaining ponds be constructed? Will there be additional sluces out of the retaining pond and will, uh, through yards to all? Or will water continue to go through yards to already overburdened curbside sluces?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else out there that wants to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment and, um, any final, any, the discussion. Between us, Tom?
Well, I just hope the public is reassured that we, we are very concerned with drainage and stormwater. And we, any development on this property will get a real good look at. Because, uh, it's, it's a big concern of the planning commission on any property, thank you.
Donald, Sharon, Sharon?
Um, yeah, I just had a couple clarifying questions, um, for Emma. Based on some of the things that were raised, and I should say first that I thought, um. The work that was done and, and included in the staff report, both on the annexation and this rezoning proposal was excellent. Thorough and directly to the point, so thank you. Um, the, I, I, I think this came up briefly when we were talking about the annexation, but if you can just confirm. I was looking back at the annexation map to see, to see how much detail there was. Related to any, uh, easement or there was a reference to a covenant. Um, and there was the question about the alley, so, um. In, in the work for the annexation and in that map, um, were the, did you? Did you say that the county records for the parcel itself were, were thoroughly reviewed? And if there was any easement on the parcel, um, that it would have been recorded. In fact, there is a utility easement, it looks like, on that annexation map that's marked in. And, um, and if, uh, if there was a covenant that had a legally binding effect, that presumably. That was on the parcel, the Hilltop parcel that, that, um, the applicant owns, that that would be reflected. Um, and I just was wondering if you could confirm that understanding, because that means that any of these additional questions. Um, about, say, the alley are issues of the property records related to the adjacent parcels. But do we have clarity about, um, the, the records, the county property records for this parcel? Was that something that was thoroughly analyzed and included in the annexation map?
Chair through you, um, as you saw too from the utility easement on that parcel, the surveyor did go ahead and do the full legal description. And so to my knowledge, that should have included all, all legal aspects related to that parcel. Um, and also lead to Philip and Derek as well, if you have any input on that.
Okay. Sharon, do you have another question, or is that?
Oh, Chair, just, the only thing I was going to just mention really quick is that, that any covenants that were. Uh, associated with any of the previously platted though properties, we wouldn't look into unless, like. Unless it affected the specific property that was being annexed and rezoned, I guess, just for clarity, so.
Right, so that would be, that would be relevant, it's a covenant that's attached to the adjacent properties. I think what this, and that would make sense to me, Emma, what you're saying is that. The surveyor had to look at the property records for this parcel, and that's what's disclosed here and all we're seeing. Is the utility easement, um, so any other legal rights presumably are part. Would be part of the records for the other adjacent parcels, um, but, but that would be something, uh, to be cons. I mean, the, the. Pretty owners. Might want to look at in, uh, the Hilltop parcel. And the one other thing, I just wanted to see if there was, um, any information that could be provided related to, um. Did, did, was there, I, I wasn't even sure, the rural residential, I know is more on the edges of the city. But, um, was that something that the staff considered for this parcel?
Chair through you, um, staff considered the zoning districts and went with the most, um, logical option, which we believed was the R one. Since the surrounding properties are also zoned R one as well. Um, however, um, council is always welcome to make an amendment, but you are right, I feel like normally RR is typically found more on the outskirts. However, I don't believe there's anything saying it could not be this parcel.
Parcels is the R one, because that's what they are, right? Yeah.
Yeah, all, all four.
Thank you.
But it's, it's a, it's an interesting question, uh, for sure. Any other, Donald?
So, I, I plan to vote in favor of this zoning this as city R one. And this is a comment, a kind of direct at the city council, and that is. We do not have a zoning for a natural area. Everything must be developed in one way or another, and it seems to me, as someone who came to Wyoming thirty four years ago. An area that is a natural area, especially in areas prominent as this. Uh, and an area, when I lived on Beaufort Street, I regularly trespassed with my dog and took full advantage of the scenery. This is a natural area, it's a beautiful area, and it seems to me a cause of some regret. We don't have the capacity to say we would zone it as. We don't have the capacity to say we would zone it as a natural area, but obviously it would involve a change in ownership. Uh, and that's a cause of some regret. Uh, but I I do plan to vote to to change the zoning or to create the zoning for this area of R one.
Okay, any other comments from Commission? Is there a motion?
So I move to recommend that the city council approve an amendment to the city of Laramie's official zoning map rezoning. Uh, one property with a total size of approximately fifteen point eight acres from uh, county not zone to city or one single family, family residential.
Second.
Second from Tom. Uh, final discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans? Matamore?
Aye.
Isaac White, absent. O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider, absent. And Moody?
Aye.
That is five yeses, zero noes, and two absent.
Okay, it's in city council's hands now. Um, okay, that's all that we have on the docket for uh, as planning commission. Is there a motion uh, to adjourn as planning commission and reconvene as board of adjustment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second from Donald? Okay, so we are now board of adjustment people.
I'd like to, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I want to thank the public for showing up for this. We're, we really like having input from the city, from the people. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
So anyone that's going to to speak at the for for the variance? And I think some people in the in the back are you I need to swear you in? For the for the variance process? Yeah. So you swear to tell the truth and hold truth and nothing but the truth? Got you. Okay, you're good. All right, the first um, the the only item on uh, the board of adjustments docket is variance V A R dash twenty-four dash ten eight oh eight South Ninth Street, oversized accessory building height exception. Emma's at it again.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Planning Commission. Thanks for sticking with me through this afternoon evening. Um, just a reminder for this one as board of adjustments, since there are um, three absent, all four must approve this variance for for five. Yeah. Must go through to approve it. But yeah, I'll go ahead and jump into the application now. Um, but we are considering a variance request for a property located at eight oh eight South Ninth Street in the R two zoning district. The applicant, William, is seeking approval to construct an accessory building that exceeds the height of the principal structure on the property. Under Laramie Municipal Code, accessory buildings must not exceed the height of the principal built structure or exceed twenty-four feet in height unless a variance is granted. In this case, the proposed accessory building is twenty-three feet um, nine and three-quarter inches tall, while the existing home is twenty-two feet, one and three-quarter inches tall. Although the accessory building meets the R two zones maximum height limit of twenty-four feet, the variance is needed solely because the principal structure is unusually short. Uh, the staff report outlines several key findings. So the property is unique in that the principal structure is shorter than others in the neighborhood. The R two zoning district allows principal buildings up to forty feet tall, highlighting the relatively modest height of the existing home. Strict adherence to the code would limit the reasonable use of the land, as a shorter accessory building would not meet the applicant's needs for functionality. The variance requested would not deprive the applicant of access to alternative forms of energy. The proposed building height is considered the minimum adjustment needed to achieve the purpose. And the variance aligns with the intent of code, maintaining harmony with the neighborhood and not proposing or not posing any detriment to public welfare. Um, approval of this variance is also not expected to alter the neighborhood's character. Staff recommends approval of the variance with specific conditions, including adherence to the site plan and compliance with building codes and received building permits. So generally, the process you'd have to go through anyway. One written comment was received and was attached to the staff report for your consideration. Um, additionally, two to three inquiries for general information were received by staff. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chair Moody and Planning Commission. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions for for Emma? Mission? Seeing none? The would the applicant like to come up and say anything? Okay. Gotcha.
Then you'd have to go shovel it off.
Okay, so um, any discussion for the applicant? We're all good. Um, public comment on on this variance? Seeing none? Um, final discussion, it seems, it it seems like a, like a reasonable thing. Well, yeah, yeah, if you if you, public.
Hello, again, I am Jacob Thayer of seven twenty-one South Eighth Street. Um, just wanted to speak in favor of this, um, since I now know what it's about and just uh, I'm asking uh, just asking to learn how to be better informed about things in my neighborhood.
Right on. Thank you. Well, okay, back to uh, Commission comments, any, any? Anything, Donald?
Yes, the only question, I should know this neighborhood since it's fairly close to mine, but uh, are, is this house kind of unique in the neighborhood? Are all the houses kind of low? Or is there a lot of variation in in the height of the houses?
Well, there's one with a real, it's a small house with big setback on the street. Is that the one?
No, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna come up, come up next?
I'm Jill Wolford, married to Bill Kistner. Oh, I'm Jill Wolford, married to Bill Kistner. It's my house. Our house. Um, Bob Bell's house is directly beside to the north, much taller than ours. And then the house to the south is about the same height as ours. Might be slightly higher. And then there's four houses on the street. The house to the south does have another house setback.
Yeah.
And then on Steel and Ninth Street is a more two-story house, and ours is not two-story, it's one-story.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the requested variance from Laramie Municipal Code fifteen dot twelve dot triple zero dot B Table fifteen dot twelve dash two dimensional requirements and L M C fifteen dot ten dot zero three zero dot C dot three for the accessory building at eight oh eight South Ninth Street in the R two zoning district. This would allow the applicant to construct an accessory building, which is twenty-three feet, nine and three-quarter inches tall, that exceeds the height of the principal structure, which is twenty-two feet, one and three-quarter inches tall, located at eight oh eight South Ninth Street. Based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and subject to the recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, final discussion. I mean, it's about a a foot and a half um, uh, exceedance, a little more than that. Sharon?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge um, the the comment um, from the neighbor that was um, uh, included. Thank you, Emma, at the end of the staff report. And my understanding is, so there are going to be some consequences from um, the building, but but the, as you just pointed out, Chairman, the the difference is relatively small. And there is, there is the right to 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 build a building almost this tall. Is is that right, Emma? So that would be happening otherwise.
Yeah, Chair, through you. In the R two zoning district, uh, they could legally build their principal structure up to forty feet in height, which would likely have a lot larger impact. And then they would be able to go ahead and construct the accessory building to twenty-four foot without a variance at all.
Okay, and and also that that, the person that that wrote the letter, his house is is southwest of this of this house. It's not directly behind, you know. It it didn't seem to kind of be in the, in the, in the shadow zone, so to speak, from 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 that garage. It it seemed was kind of a head-scratcher for me looking at it that it would be.
Well, and I just wanted to acknowledge, having seen it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, thank you.
Any other uh?
Again, I'd just like to thank the public for showing up, seeing what we do. Thank you.
Okay. Um, roll call vote.
Pacino?
Aye.
Evans? Matamore?
Aye.
Isaac White is absent. O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider is absent. Moody?
Aye.
Has five yeses, zero noes, and two absent.
Okay, variance approved and I guess we're the boss on that one. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn as board of adjustment?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Adios.
Aye. Okay.